Hello Gary, how are you doing?
Yeah. Doing excellent.
Some of it. No, not yet. I still gotta do the landscaping down the side of my house. Got all this stuff in the front. Gotta get all the stuff down the side, which they're not swarming anymore. And, and, thank you. Um, I think that, and I haven't seen any inside, so I think we're okay. Um, you know.
I can get Peter.
Watching along. Now, what happened with the tourism stuff? Was it a big mess again today?
Yep. Nothing really changed.
Nah, it wasn't me.
Welcome everyone to our first meeting of the month. And if everyone would stand, I'd like to recognize Carl Campbell with, he's a member of the Parkway Baptist Church for the invocation.
Uh, just would like to say I hope everybody had a good 4th of July. Uh, yes, no, maybe so. With all the rain, I messed up ours as well, so praise the Lord for that. But let's go to the Lord in prayer, and as he says in his word, let us therefore come unto the Lord in boldness and thankful. Give him the glory and honor for all that he's done in our life. You know God is good, he's always been good. And we can count on him to do everything that we need. You know, he said, "Be not anxious for nothing, but by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, let your requests be known unto God, and the peace that passes all understanding shall guard your heart and your mind of those things you have committed unto our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ." In that respect, Father, we want to give you a praise and honor because you are the Alpha and Omega for all of us. We thank you so much for the leadership you have provided here in this rotunda, in this council room. The leadership that has gone through Katrina and gone through Camille and, and now we're faced with the flood, the BPR. And we're climbing over these hills, Father, because you are preparing us for working with each other. And somehow in all of these disasters, we've come closer together now than we've ever been before. And it's a miracle that you're doing that. Three hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and fifty million people came here to help us out of Katrina. And we know a lot of them have come back. So we thank you for the leadership that the mayor's invited and being so humble to bring more blessing to his side. A mayor of former history to come and work with him in this whole endeavor of building the east side back and helping with the construction work there. For all the mayors, all the council members up here, we pray for their families, Father. You know, families suffer so much when we are, uh, doing the work of the Lord. Families suffer so much when we have come so far for many, many things that we have had to climb over. But because you have prepared us for all those things, because you have told us how to work with you and how to have wisdom be the principal thing. He said, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask the Lord." Because wisdom is the most principal thing that any of us could ask from the Lord in, in, in any way, form, or fashion. And if we know that, we can be leaders that are bound by the Spirit of God and living in his Holy Spirit. The spirit of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge. And he said that, and he said, "Knowledge is the wisdom," and that we should always seek to have understanding. I pray today that each one of these councilmen will seek to have the understanding of the Lord, the wisdom of God that he has always blessed us with and continues to bless us with. For the council members that I've known that I've worked with, and thank you, Lord, for them, that they have continued to be that kind of person and been re-elected to the office of council members. Thank you so much for so many of these departments and the departments of the city that have come together and made such a difference in this city and how we are run and how we're working. I don't know so much about this one day salesman, what you call it, customer service, but that's something we can work on as well, Father. Sixty-hundred million children in this world today are absent of good water. Real dirty water. And finding somebody that's made to six million of those children. And so we thank you now for what you're doing in our life. I bet everyone in this room knows the Lord's Prayer by heart. But you know, eighty percent of our students in school don't know the Lord's Prayer by heart and cannot say the Lord's Prayer. Can we help with that? Can we be the people that Jesus said are called by his name? "If my people get to call by my name, that hunger themselves seek my face, turn from their looking ways and pray; then what I hear from heaven is here their land." So I thank you now for this privilege, this opportunity to pray for these men and women that are working night and day, most of the time. You know, it doesn't stop when you get at home, when you leave here. It doesn't stop when you get, get back at home. It continues to start. And I understand how difficult and how tough that working with people can be sometimes. And so we thank you for their patience, their endurance, their grace, their faith. And we ask you to continue to give them your grace, your faith, and your mercy. That is, in Jesus' name we pray. And all who love him said, "Amen," and amen. We are the world, we are the children, we are the ones to make a brighter day. So let's start giving. There's a choice we're making, we're saving our lives. It's true, we can make a brighter day, just you and me. Praise the Lord, brothers and sisters.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll go ahead and get started. I need a motion to suspend the rules. Mr. Lawrence, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett? Mr. Barrett, just nipped you there. All right, um, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Clerk, would you read the additions?
To the consent agenda, we're substituting 5E resolution for change order fourteen with Nikkeis Brothers. We're substituting 5O resolution for Gomisafunding for giving by you. Substituting 5P resolution for Gomisafunding for Hubble Park. Substituting 5W resolution for change order number fifteen for Nikkeis Brothers. Adding 5J resolution authorizing a letter addendum with Alexander Van Loomslam.
All right. All right, Mr. Lawrence, new does it amend, amended? Do you have a second? Second by Ms. Newman? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. Mayor's report?
Yeah, thank you. Welcome everyone to July meeting. I do trust everyone had a good 4th of July, and it was very meaningful to everyone. I know some fireworks were abundant around our city. And, uh, I think, what did it go on, did it all in twenty minutes, I believe, wasn't it? As far as the, 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 all the contributions the city has made to that, I think was well worth, well done. And that pretty much concludes my report. Welcome to a July meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, it sure was like nineteen minutes, roughly about two thousand a minute. So it was well worth it. A big crowd on the beach, a lot of people out to view it. So it's always a great thing for the 4th of July, you know. This, this country is built on patriotism, constitution, laws. This, you know, and that's what makes it such a great country, a free country. But sometimes maybe we look past that, or we do things ourselves, that we don't realize how great it is to be in a free nation. To do what you want to do. To sit up here and make the laws of the city, set these laws, work for the city. We're not being shot down every time we come to work or something like that. You know, but I mean, it's pretty amazing to think about that. See the books of that, we have that much clout because people gave their lives for us to be able to do this. So that's a great thing. Fourth of July's always a good one. Uh, next thing I'd like to, I talked to people like this before about the Grand Galat Walkway. They were on a total plan on doing that and put a plaque out there. They just named it a walkway.
Again, there's some things with, with regard to Gwen and some, some of her wishes, and I think we're gonna, I welcome some conversation. We meet with us next week, or tomorrow, or the next day.
Yeah. I mean, it was just something, you know, she grew up down there, did a lot for the city, so that's a good thing. Now, I've been asked a lot about the lighthouse pier. And what's the hold of it? Is that still FEMA problem?
Permits, yeah, I think the design, again, the mitigation with the lighthouse pier is getting eight-hundred-foot pier. We were looking at putting a beach, a breakwater with stones of about three-hundred-and-sixty feet. The rest of it would be concrete with flow through. The total price tag, Mike, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, was four-point-five million. Uh, based on the mitigation, we're probably looking for another million-two to put that eight-hundred-foot pier back with concrete and do the breakwater that needs to be done. The permits that are very hard to, because any time you go over two-hundred-and-thirty feet off that beach, you got some corp engineers, DMR, situation, but our engineers are in the middle of that right now trying to tie it up.
If I could add, Mayor, we're on a two-track mode here. First track is the permitting track, and everything that we can do has been done, and that permit requests are in the hands of the regulatory agencies. The second part is the submission of a, a project to FEMA. We have submitted that project, and we're looking for a conference call this next week to discuss that with FEMA. They, the, the, what we hope will happen is that they will approve the hazard mitigation project that we have so that we could build back better. And at that point, we will then technically have a grant. And as you remember, in CPEB, we have a grant anticipation note sitting there that we've never drawn on. And we'll be able to draw the money from there and, and begin the construction of the pier. So we're moving turtle-like, but we're, we're getting, we're getting there.
We're breaking the, breaking down, we're going back, the way we're doing it. You know, you said a lot of problems. We already built it back through, through time.
That's right.
So taking the stuff to make it better and be in concrete.
The interesting thing, interesting thing that FEMA finally recognized that, that just don't put it back the same way. And even the testing, I think the pilings that were tested, the wood pilings, in order to confirm what we should do with concrete, I think there was like six to seven years left on those pilings. So it's time, and I think that increased our mitigation opportunity. So move as fast as we can with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be, it's a good thing. And, uh, on the football courts, we had, we said any money aside for the football courts up there in, uh, by Pop's Ferry?
We did. Any budget? And as far as the, as far as the twenty, twenty-one bond, that's two-hundred thousand ready to fix the, I guess, the restrooms and the locker rooms and do some things with the shade. And I think that's in the budget, and, you know, the funding is through the bond that we just passed, so.
Oh, it's, uh, it's a two-year plan, National Tennis, my people talk to me, it's amazing. All of a sudden, you watch, while we watch football, basketball, baseball, football, cornhole, it's all on national TV all the time.
As we will with all of these projects that, you know, the fourteen-million-dollar bond, some of the, you know, water sewer and matching and, and the extension as well. That will be one of the projects that will need your approval on how it will roll out. So that, we will be asking for that just as soon as we possibly can.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great park, the construction stand, the bathrooms, that's gonna be great out there, add that to it. That's, you know, Pop's Ferry gonna be huge. They'll be hosting there.
As well as some.
When we go hit more courts there, they'll be bringing them in here. People love, love coming here to gamble. They talk about it all the time.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Joe had talked about. I went out and watched the fireworks show yesterday. It was a great show. And I also want to come in and made a lot of connections, a lot of information in the mail this past week. It was a lot, lot of information. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
No report.
Mr. Tisdale? Yeah, a few things. One is there's an historic oak on Edgewater Drive, between Edgewater Drive and Balmoral, out in Edgewater Park. And we had the, the lights were lit, they're, I guess, in the ground, and they light up the tree at night. And I think, I think we spent two and a half thousand to have that done, probably three or four months ago. And it was lit beautifully for about two weeks, and then all the lights went out. I don't know what the deal is. My guess is it's probably electrical. I think Glenn Moran did the work. My understanding is he's reputable. It may be that somebody just needs to get with him to go back and look at it, or, um, there may be, I don't know if there's a timer, I don't know how those lights are regulated, or there may be some sort of junction box that may be involved. I think there are several around that tree, but not necessarily located there by the tree, maybe on a pole nearby.
Balmoral and where?
Edgewater Park.
Edgewater Park.
Yeah, it's between Edgewater Drive and Balmoral. It's a triangular-shaped park. It's a beautiful tree. The tree's gotta be three-hundred years old. The lights apparently are two-hundred-and-eighty years old, but, um, the second thing, Pennzoil McManus Park, that they've got a walking track there. Uh, three lights are unlit. There are four light poles with no light fixtures. And one of the lights was, was strobing, if that's a verb. If not, I've just invented a verb, strobing. It was kind of in, in the center of that. So I don't know if the number of lights, fixtures were reduced because they weren't needed or whether they just were never replaced. And then those lights stay on all day. So I don't know how they're regulated either. It's, you know, if it's a photoelectric cell, I mean, the thing is so shady, it may be why it's on, or, I don't know.
Doc, I think I've seen you strobing in here a couple of times too.
I'm fixing to strob in just a minute.
Seventies kind of thing.
I love now. Um, Pennzoil, let's see. Um, and also there are some stumps. Again, I touched on this. There are like eight or nine stumps, I think, at Pennzoil, and there are three or four small ones at Westview Park. But they're, they're, it's still an issue. Some of those stumps are a good, good size, some of them probably maybe trees that are a foot in diameter that were downed in tropical storms or hurricanes. Also, again, westbound lane on Pass Road, on either side of Eisenhower Drive, you've got dips in the, uh, roads, and, and folks who drive that way frequently kind of know how to avoid that spot. But, um, I think one is where there was a, put in a drain maybe a couple of years ago. But anyway, some of that has sunk.
We restitched it.
Right. And, and, and then on, on the west side of that, it's just, it's gonna be, again, and westbound, the north lane, there are just two spots. Probably just needs some asphalt in there. Okay. All right, thank you. That concludes my strobing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Um, we're gonna go back to Mr. Demming. You had something you wanted to say?
Not so much as a report as a question. Mr. Mayor, Mike, I had some requests that I wanted to put in at the dog park. They require, um, the request would require laying some cement. I didn't know if I should follow through with, with Ms. Bell or Mr. Ray's, um, office to, uh, to get, um, the Ray's office, to get concrete put in. We've let the water, where the water is, where people bring their dogs and cool off or drink water, it just tricked through mud. So I thought if we laid a couple of concrete beds there that people could stand in and slope them down so water would run away from, away from the park, while dogs, while the hoses are on or the spigots are on.
How big a pad, how big a pad do you think it would be?
I mean, I would, I.
Scientific wild ass guess?
Ten by ten.
Ten by ten? Okay. We have a concrete contractor that we could engage. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Good timing.
Thank you. That's why I said a report, then I saw we had some people in attendance. That's all, Kenny.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of things. Um, Mr. Leonard, the fence that we have scheduled to go around the pump station Eagle Point Park, um, I've gotten, more and more people are going out now that since Moore's done, and I'm getting a lot of calls and messages about it. Um, do you know when that's gonna happen? Or, I, I know that we approved a, a bid for it, um, or.
This is the fence around the lift station?
Around the lift station, correct.
Uh, I'll get back to you tomorrow, I promise.
Okay, and then on one corner of that lift station, right outside the fence, it's sort of built up onto a little hill. There's a collapse, and, um, I've got a couple of calls on that as well. They're worried about somebody playing, falling into that hole. I don't know if that's something that HCUA does or we do, but, um, if it's us, if, if we could address that. If not, I can call, um, HCUA and try to get that addressed.
You think it has something to do with the lift station?
I, I don't think so. I think it's just rainwater has, has made a big wash out there. Um, they're just worried about.
Love it. Engineer Inspector, go look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, I just had a couple of parents call me. I'm worried about that. Third thing is the ditch along Penn Oak. Uh, last year, I know that Public Works went out and, and cut that where we had a bunch of, it was, the trees had grown up where the contractor had left the silt fence up for an extended period of time, and it couldn't be cut. And it's getting to that point again. I don't know if that's Public Works or if Parks and Rec is gonna take care of that. But, um, it's just, it's getting grown up again to where it's gonna be a major task if we don't, if we don't get that cut down and, and keep it maintained. And then, um, I, I sent over a list of forty-something items a couple, a few weeks ago, and I'd like to say thanks to Public Works. They've knocked out multiple of those on the smaller, um, smaller projects. And I know some of those are gonna be more like capital projects of some of the things that are on there. But I do have, after these rains that we've had, Carly Lane has gotten really bad with the washouts. Um, there's, it really, and I requested this as well. It really needs to be repaved, but every time we had these bad rains, um, these, these potholes are just washing out because part of, part of it's on a hill, so you have all this water coming down a hill. And when we go in and we patch these holes, every time it rains real bad, they're washing out. So if there can be, if we can do something to, even if we can't get it paved right away, which we need, but if we can go in and do something to, to, to try to prevent those potholes, because basically what we're doing is we're going in filling them, we have a bad rain and it washes them out. Um, so if we can, um, but after this rain, there's, there's some, I rode through there this afternoon after a couple of calls, and there's, there's several really bad ones.
To share with you, councilman, as well as the rest of the council, a little background on what's going on with paving right now. As, as you probably know, the price of things, in particular, things having to do with oil, oil and gas are really out of sight. Our, our, our paving contract is an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract with Warren paving with a backup of stock still. Neither one of them is willing to pave for us right now because the prices, they can't operate, they can't do work on, at the prices that are in the contract.
Correct.
So we in the county and the city of Gulfport all have met with Warren paving to talk about a, a solution, contractual solution. The attorneys at, at both, all the cities are looking at it, and we're trying to come up with something that's fair and equitable and can get them back working. But right now, we haven't had any paving for two months.
Correct.
I think, let me ask, answer, or add something to that to MDOT spacing the same thing. So we're trying to piggyback on what MDOT is facing as far as escalation. There's a red book, I think Walt's back there somewhere. We took some language right out of the MDOT red book in order to address some of this escalation. So we may be coming back to include whatever legal, uh, things we need to include in bids and so forth to accommodate that and get the, you know, the service done. Because literally, it's probably fifty percent, you know, escalation in the per ton of asphalt that some of these companies are facing. Big town.
So we, we have six projects that are on the list that we've given them that we've, we've had now for two months without any, any new starts. So we're, we're, we're trying to get to an equitable solution, something that's legal and fair and not too expensive. So we should have something pretty, pretty.
And let me drop that, you know, Fema and FEMA together, you know, are doing a lot of the things on the, you know, things that were bid two years ago, three years ago, with the bid price that they're stuck with. And, and that's gonna be a problem. So we're asking, you know, uh, uh, FEMA and FEMA to give us some accommodation. I'm, I'm sure they're facing this all over the country, as well as all over the state. So it's a, it's a problem we're trying to address, and we'll, once we come up with some, some language, we'll get it before you so we can move forward as fast as we can with some of these projects.
And then the last thing, which it's, it's sort of in the same, same wheelhouse is Shorecrest. And I know that, um, you know, that section between the bridge and the sewer plant, um, it, it is a section that can be redone. But until we can get that redone, there's one dip in there that, that's terrible. And going in and patching it, I don't know if it's just, if we could possibly go in and cut that section out and, and repack it and put some, you know, temporary stuff in there until, um, but it's, it's a dip right there north of the first house. Um, when you come, when you're going north, just north of that first house, there's a dip that goes all the way across the road. I don't know if it's from some type of service that was ran under the road or something at some point, but it goes all the way across the road.
North of the wastewater treatment plant, north?
No, no, it's south. It's between the bridge and the wastewater treatment plant. So when you cross the bridge, you'll pass the first house on the left, and he has a, a big metal building there as well. It's right in that area, um, right, right around there. And it's been patched a bunch, but it's, again, it's one of those deals where it doesn't hold, and we have an enormous amount of traffic on that road. Um. Okay. Now, I'm talking, I'm talking north of the bridge. Okay, okay, good deal. Okay. All right.
No, we're, we're in total agreement, and we need to rework that Shorecrest in, you know, whatever fashion we can. I think we've got the opportunity to do that.
And I'm not, I'm not at all, I'm not at all fussing. Mike and them do an excellent job, and they've got on that list and knocked out several, um, things already. Um, I'm just relaying the concerns of our constituents. So I appreciate the help in that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I got a few things on my report. First of all, the Boom Boom Committee, um, you know, putting on that fireworks show was pretty spectacular. Want to commend, uh, our law enforcement and all the support, um, you know, personnel for keeping everything in, uh, safe and the traffic flowing and, and everything for that day. Excellent job. One more with the Boom Boom Committee. I know we give ten, ten thousand dollars each year. Their expenses are going up thirty-something percent, I heard. Um, and I think we lost our number one ranking. We fell down to number two because they're trying to trim costs. So perhaps we can look at non-departmental, and there's other, um, entities that we fund, maybe scale that back and give another twenty-five-hundred to the Boom Boom Committee. Um, but we'll address that in budget talks coming up sometime later. Uh, Hingen in Pass Flat Landing, Chief, thank you again for setting up that meeting coming up later this week. I've heard from several of them that are going to the meeting, they're excited to, to hear. And I told them, "Keep, oh, keep it neutral. Don't get too positive or whatever, but, uh, stay in neutral. Let's, uh, get all the facts on the table and see if we can make some progress there." I also want to thank, uh, Mike Leonard and the administration and the departments for jumping on the fire hydrants that were reported. There were some, uh, they were being covered up because of the growth. Uh, Biloxi Fire Hydrants are, are being taken care of along Cedar Lake and, and some of the other areas.
Chief Geiser, Chief Geiser's got something he'd like to share with you about that.
All right, um, Chief, come up here. I just, I'm, I'm just, I want to finish my thought on it. I did talk to Connie Rocco. She's, uh, looking in at the county, if they have any. She's looking in at the county, if they have any jurisdiction over some. And she's looking at wastewater or Harrison County Utility Authority to check and see what they're responsible for. Chief?
Correct, yes, sir. So it's a, it's a touchy situation out there as far as summer county. Some are actually setback that are not usable. It was that road that was gonna come in and weren't, never, it got rerouted. But in that area, yes, there are some that we can't even get to just because of hazardous areas that I'm, I'm sure Billy Ray and them had the same issue as far as getting down there to try to cut it where they position these things. It's a, it's, they're not in a good spot.
So we can't access them? Is that what I'm hearing? So do we need to, do we need to relocate or remove them or... I understand.
Right.
But the, you know, the image and the perception of our taxpayers when they, it looks like we're not, we're not at the helm paying attention to it when it simply may be an unusable fire. Don't we paint them black or green or something like that if they, if they're unusable and then we go and pull them up? Yeah.
Typically, if we find one that is, that's unusable, stem's broken or something along those lines, we paint the top to identify that it is a unusable hydrant. Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of the things I was hoping he was gonna say is that, the first thing he told me was that the fire department is responsible for inspecting and testing hydrants every year. And part of that inspection involves clearing the debris and grass and so forth from around the thing. But in some cases, and this is one of those cases, the growth has been so extreme that it's not, it's beyond the kind of machine, machinery that they carry around on a firetruck. So we'll coordinate that with Public Works and the county. And you told me that some of those are county plugs, right?
Yes, sir. Some of them. It all depends on where they are located in that general area. But yes, like you say, we do an annual inspection. When we go do our annual inspection, we're painting it, we're greasing the stem, we're greasing the threads, we're flowing it to get water moving to make sure everything works correctly. We clear a three-foot area or as best, if there needs to be a path, we typically take care of that. But it's a one-time, it's an annual inspection. Past that, you know, we'll go by, a lot of times we'll, we'll get with Mr. Billy Ray and get some roundup to take care of issues like you're talking about. But sometimes it's a hydrant, it might be something that we were not able to access, they weren't able to access. And of course, we'd love to be able to access it. We just find another hydrant down the road that is accessible and just come up with that plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Billy Ray, you got anything or...
I was just gonna say...
What did he said?
You know, if Nick agrees, we'll get with the county and see if we all three can come up with a solution, possibly build a road high and dry. And if we have to put a fence around it to keep people from getting through there, that might be the answer.
Okay. Thank you, directors. Chief. Couple more things. Budgets, leads me into budgets. Certainly will be coming up, there'll be a calendar of workshops and everything that we, that we'll get all that information in front of everybody so we can start planning. But I'd like to ask, I'm not charging or passing a resolution, I'd like to ask a twelve-month rolling, most recent twelve months that we have on record, if we can get that information in advance to all the council members so they can see the twelve month on revenues, expenses, departments, et cetera. And then as you present some of the budget items and we get into those workshops, that'll be some useful information if we can have that at our disposal. Is that too difficult?
No. We're, we're in the process of going department by department. We've made it through all but, all but two. And we go line by line. How much did you ask for? What did you use this year so far? What did you use fully the last full year? Why do you want more or why do you want less? Item by item by item. It's very time consuming to get that in a shape where it needs to be for the council to see it.
I have the performance information every week, you know, to look, you know, we threw the nine, you know, the nine periods, you know, three quarters of the year. And that's available. We do that every week so we can pass that out, at least give you the last, since October 1.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So at least it gives the council a rolling twelve or nine, calling it twelve months would be ideal to, to see what it looked like, look back at all those expenses. And then when you bring that overlay to us and we have those discussions and modifications, it certainly helps. I know me for one, I got some questions on the library system, some displays that they may be displaying that for me and some of my taxpayers and people I represent have questioned some of those displays. And, and then I don't know how they use that increase that we gave them last year, if they specifically used it for what they came here and told us they wanted to use it for. If not, maybe I can be trans-ETA, I'm assuming with the gas prices, we're gonna hear something on that. But, you know, we got a lot of work to do. Roll up our sleeves, see where we're at, what the projections are, expenses, and do our work.
I know the library lady is looking forward very much to coming back to council. She had such a good time last year.
Yeah. I'll leave our comments collectively for when that process starts. And then finally, I do want to just put this on the record. We had Greg Radich passed away. If y'all knew Greg, his dad was John Hack Radich. But he, he was very much involved in VOTEC, very much involved in the students at Biloxi High and, and that program and furthering their careers. And I would just like if we could recognize him in closing this afternoon. And that concludes my report.
I got another email saying that the line for the ward's been changed. I said, or is it officially changed? If not, if, we need to put that something in the B-mail because the people don't think that the lines has been changed. Like we supposed to adjust them, we changed them. We all picked up new people in our ward. They can't be out, or they're in a new part of the ward or it's still old. So somehow the people gotta get the thing on record stating, you're in Ward 1, this is what you consist of. You're in Ward 2, this is what you consist of, the new ward. So they're officially in effect?
Yeah, they officially in effect, definitely within thirty days of when we passed it. So they've been in effect, that was probably what, last November? We did a splash pay, general B-mans. There's, the new ward lines, I think, show the maps where they are. But we can, we can maybe highlight that a little bit or run that and remind everybody in the, in the B-mans. I saw Gulfport just did theirs last week. So that probably got people worrying, wondering what was going on.
Yeah. So that's why this guy just, he didn't think it was in effect yet, told them it were. So I just wanted to make sure we have that verified once again. Everybody said Biloxi, done, these are the new ward lines for the new wards.
I think we still have, in the lobby, I think we still have the main map showing the ward lines, but it's also on the internet. But I think it's good, that'd be a good reminder.
Well, if they're in the mail, everybody gets one at the house. That's the greatest thing though, you know? If they don't look at it, that's, but they get one. They won't be on line, they won't be on this. They get that thing in the mail, every time they put it out. Pretty impressive, the magazine.
Can we get a page, can we get a page of the B-mans?
Just do it again, you know, that's all. So it doesn't matter. But hey, doesn't matter. You needed information to the people. They need to know it's done, this is the new ward line.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Anybody else have anything you may have forgotten to say or want to get on your council report? No? No, I'm not gonna do that. All right. So we'll move on to the citizens' comments. We have a total of forty-five minutes allotted in this section of the agenda. When you're recognized, come up to the front, take your seat sign-in on the sign-in sheet, legibly, your name and your address, and state your name and address for the record so the clerk can record it. Anyone on my left, your right? Yes, sir. By the way, you have three minutes and the clerk will let you know when your time has expired.
All right. Thank you. Come on, chief, come on, chief, come on.
All right. I brought y'all a copy of the City of Biloxi ordinances, which prohibit lottery and panhandling, open containers, just, just all the rules of the city.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm John Higgins. I live in 224 Querens Avenue, Biloxi.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, there's so much going on with the homeless right now that y'all did a good job down there after I complained enough about it at that park, you know, with all them pedophiles and all, was that a kids park down there at the lighthouse? You know? Well, now you got a whole bunch of trouble coming y'all's way. They got Swatman's house on the beach, he had to call them, they carried off the drunk and they let him walk off with a knife. Then the girl next door, Lila Jordan, had one lane in her front yard. They got that drunk up, let him go walking off with a big knife. Now, y'all like your jobs, you like your paycheck? The first one of them people gets run over, use that knife on somebody, it's gonna, the city's gonna get sued by somebody and be owned by somebody and y'all gonna be working for them. Just like two weeks ago, Nativity has their summer camp, you know? And they had a couple of them homeless people who went there and stole bicycles. Well, then the next day, some homeless guy went there, ball hit it, covering tattoos, beating on all the doors, beating on the windows, scared all them little kids to death. And they all know what just happened to all them kids in Texas. And I'm telling you, the city cops is like giving them back their knives and letting them walk down the streets drunk. Man, well, something's wrong with this city, you know? There's, there's, that paper I gave you right there has about twenty different ordinances on it that y'all can make them do. You can make these people. I mean, the other day I went by Josapi's. There's three people sitting at the bus stop drinking them big steel beers. There's two people walking down Howard Avenue, got an open container right by your daddy's business. And then there's one more sitting at the bus stop at the farmer's market, that ain't even a mile, there's six open containers on Howard Avenue. You got people just, they, they all know that y'all not arresting nobody, y'all not doing nothing. Then the guy that runs the Catholic Nativity down there tell me that every time they ever went, they get bummed rush by a bunch of homeless people. And then they go behind it to Nativity, to Sacred Heart, and have their reception, they get bummed rush. Well, I bet you something you don't know. All them homeless people broke into the, to the convent where the nine Jesus were there building it, and forty years old, they have completely destroyed it and the church is getting ready to tear it down. And y'all, y'all hear that, did you?
Your time is cut.
All right. I'll be back. But one other thing, there's about thirty people been told by the police that they can't do nothing? You got it in your hand. Right now, you can make something.
Your time is up. Your time is up. Anyone else on my left? Your right? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
Let me write my name down. All right. Good evening. My name is Jason Johnson. I've been involved with this community for over thirty-three years, the Honorable Mayor to the City Council. I am here to mention something, requesting a reconsideration. You had a, a meeting on the 12th of May concerning short-term rental. I appeared before the Planning Commission on the 5th of May, and I'm just looking at the notes, they voted eleven to zero to recommend approval for a short-term rental. I'm a businessman, I'm a pastor, I've been here, I'm part of the Air Force community. I am in the community of Ward 1, Ward 2. I own property there, apartments there, businesses there. And certainly, there's a lot of things happening in that area. So I requested this in the sense of trying something different. I requested for four properties, however, I really want one. And that's 1683 A. But while I was, before the Planning Commission, I figured I would just request a short-term. I've done the traditional rentals and sometimes it doesn't work the way I wanted to work because of that community. So I, I simply would, I would like to get an understanding, I would like you to reconsider it. I thought about the Planning Commission, all of them said yes. And then I'm looking at this and four of you, of course, said you didn't think it was a good idea. I just want you to reconsider that, if not all the properties, at least the one that I would really like to make a short-term rental. Again, that's why I'm here, for reconsideration. While I'm here, if I have one more minute, in that community, Rodenburg, Ibeville veterans, there's a lot of things going on, drugs, shootings, all types of things. My church is engaged every week, and I really would like for us to sort of zoom in on that side of the community, try to make it better. So personally, I'm involved with four, five, six, seven properties in that community. So I'm there and I'm doing all I can to make it better. So to the council, to the mayor, I'm just asking that you all would reconsider the requests. The Planning Commission gave me a thumbs up. And I'll just, as a preacher, a house divided against itself, they all said yes and some of you said no. So I'm asking for reconsideration. If not all the properties, at least one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right?
Hi, my name is Jeff Pope, 623 Murray Street, Biloxi, Mississippi. I'm in Ward 2. My Ward 2 councilman called Pelican and asked him to remove some trash that's been sitting in the middle of the street for three weeks. It rained the other day. It, the water didn't even want to drain because of the trash that's sitting there. And all I'm asking, can somebody ask them to move it? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this side of the room, my left, your right? We'll move to the other side, my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I think a lot of you know me. I was born Linda Sue Edwards. And the property that I'm here to speak to you about is the property on Shorecrest Road. There's been a proposal sent over to y'all by the Planning Commission that fifty-two single houses to be built on that property. This is my homestead. This is a house I grew up in seventy-seven years ago. This house was built before the Civil War. It was built in eighteen forty and it was in pristine condition before my cousin Larry Rouse got it. And he got it simply in order to sell the place for his children to make money, the root of all evil. Biloxi has missed a grand opportunity by not having this property for their own. The house is just gorgeous. It's an old southern house. As a matter of fact, the oak trees are beautiful and the magnolia trees are southern. They're beautiful. They just make Mississippi the state that it really is. The times now are hard. You've got the woke and you've got the conservative. This house, listen to this, was built before the Civil War. The Civil War was in eighteen sixty. This house was built in the eighteen forties. It's the planning, the man that does the maps has proved to the Planning Commission that the water that stands in the back is underwater. And if you develop this piece of property as it is with these fifty-two houses, you're going to flood Eagle Point, which used to be called Muckuson Point. Now, you need to seriously look at this because you don't have too many houses and too much property here in Mississippi. That just says... property here in Mississippi that just says, yes, Lord, this is our southern heritage. This is what we are all about. We're, this is a Christian house. I was raised as a Christian, and don't think I didn't get the little peach limb on my legs when I was growing up, when my grandmother said, that's enough to all eleven children of hers, that was enough. And I just ask that you would reconsider anything to do with fifty-two houses put on this property. If any houses goes on it, it needs to be very high-end properties, intermingled with the beautiful oak trees and the magnolias and everything that is part of this property. If you've not been there, you go down there a little lane and there's camellias and beautiful azaleas all the way down it. Now, one of the oak trees during the Civil War was cut down and donated to the, uh...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Well, let me tell you something, one of the oak trees was made a submarine for our Confederacy. You take a look at those oak trees?
I understand, ma'am.
This property?
Your, your time is up, ma'am.
Wait, I...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
I understand, I could talk all day to you.
Can you play all day too? No, I'm, I'm, I was gonna ask you to come back, but anyway, never mind. Um, anybody else on my right, your left? No one? Anyone in the back? I miss anyone that wants to speak? Public comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Item B.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for our residential two-nober-head business for one-three-one at Monique Barsha Road.
I think I moved it in two seconds, and you have that on record?
It's a first reading.
It's a first reading.
This is where they put it back on, it was, they, they had messed up on the first...
All right, I'll move it, and that, that way I did move it.
I'll second it.
All right, second, and we'll move on. Resolutions, item B.
Resolution granting final subdivision plot approval for phase one of Point Breeze subdivision.
I have quite a couple of questions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Tisdale, I have a second?
Nathan made a second.
Nathan, Barrett, second it? Just discussion?
Sure. Um, Jerry, just a couple of questions. I, I could've been strobing when I read this, but it, uh, it noted in there, there's no vehicular access to Beach Boulevard or Grandview Drive.
That's correct.
Now, the only other possible point of entry or exit is Marshall Road, but there's gonna be a fence along that side.
That's correct.
So, I'm trying to understand, once the subdivision is built, if you can't get in from Grandview and you can't get in from Beach Boulevard, how do you get into the subdivision?
No, the street, the street that they're going to construct will come in off of Grandview. There just won't be any private driveways for the houses coming in and off of Grandview.
Right, it didn't leave that way, but that's, okay, that's good. Um, but definitely Marshall Road, there's gonna be a, a fence there all along that western corner.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
Anyone else have anything they wanna discuss?
How they gonna get in and out?
Off of Grandview, uh, the only access will come off of Grandview. There will be a U-shaped road that runs north to south that comes off Grandview, and the houses will be designed on Grandview side to face east, and the ones down on Highway ninety will face Highway ninety. But the driveways for each of them will come in from the rear of the houses, so all of the drives will come off of that newly constructed road.
So, you want to, you want to, where the road is? I go back to apartments, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, that was no traffic on the same little street? Well, yeah, a lot of apartments back there.
Well, the fact that, the fact that they will only have two access points on the Grandview is gonna control traffic coming in and out, that's one of the reasons that we recommended that there not be individual driveways coming in and out, is to help control that.
With your twenty-two houses, and you say they all gonna be to the back, they all gotta get there some way, so they're gonna be more than two access. You got twenty-two houses, you've been right, you said?
Yes, sir, in phase one. There are thirty-nine houses overall gonna be in this subdivision, twenty-two in phase one.
I mean, the thing you said, you got twenty-two houses, I don't, I don't understand how you're getting twenty-two cars, say, or forty-four cars in those two houses, twenty-two houses. You said you only have, you only have, you say you're not doing a road, or you are doing a road?
The developer is building a road that comes in off of Grandview and then turns to the north and then comes back out on the Grandview at the north end of the development. And the houses will all have access to that road that's coming along there, but the driveways will come in from the rear, not directly off of Grandview.
So, you only give them one way and come out one way?
Well, it'll be, it'll be two ways either way, but it's just one, one road that runs through there.
Houses will face Grandview.
It'd be like a U, like a U?
Yes, sir, like a...
Didn't get that when you said that at first.
Yeah, okay.
Is that it? Anyone else have anything? Call for a question, all in favor? Those opposed? Question carries unanimous. Motion on consent, so moved, moved by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Tisdale?
On item H, it, um, it deals with the Pass Road and Rodenburg signal and, and we're moving money out of forty-eight thousand, out of, uh, citywide street repair to, for that, to that project, is that correct?
The, yes, I know.
And, and my question, Mike, is, I mean, well, I guess we're not doing any paving at the moment, right?
Well, no, first of all, back up, this is one of the projects in MDOT's twenty-to-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-six Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, as they call it. There are four such projects. This one's in this year, the other ones are in next year.
Okay.
That's just for those big mast arm lights that are gonna replace the hanging lights on Pass Road.
Right.
What we were doing is moving the money we need, there's a design function, design and, and property acquisition function that has to take place before we can build the, the, uh, thing, and we had to come up with a, a source of funding, and that was a legitimate source of funding for use of that money, and that, for the design of the streetlights.
Do you know basically roughly what the balance is in the citywide repairs? At about several hundred thousand?
In, in the, in the cities, um, yeah, the, the, um, paving...
Right, citywide paving.
It's about a half million dollars right now.
Beg your pardon?
It's about a half million dollars right now.
Right, and so we're gonna move some of that, this amount, from that account?
Right.
To this other project, but potentially be reimbursed when this TIP situation comes on. Excuse me, did you say potentially?
Potentially, it's on the list.
Well, yeah, I know, my, my point is, here we are, we can't pay fast enough, but we're moving money out of the paving budget.
Well, yeah.
I mean, why not take it out of the general fund?
We've gotta take the money out of somewhere to get this project started, and I mean, this project is a half million dollar streetlight.
All right, that's good, I just wanted to be clear on that. The next item is item Q. And I just wanted to be sure, this is a Restore Act funding, and we're asking for several million dollars in the local match? Did I understand that correctly? It's just seventy thousand dollars, that's less than two percent?
The, the local match is covering just our, our cost to date. This is some cost, money's already been spent.
Okay, all right, uh, then on...
You're, um, just for the rest, for you, the rest of the council, uh, there were about, there are about seven resolutions on here, and they all deal with what we did in the last two weeks. We grind, we put out three titans grants, we put out two Bill Mesa grants, we put out two, uh, grants for Restore Act, so that it was grant season.
Right.
And so that, what we're just asking, this is all coming back to council so that you are aware of what we asked for.
Sure. On item, item T is another grant, uh, request. This is, um, uh, Department of Transportation Emergency Road and Bridge Repair Fund Program, and it refers to three grants, one of those dealt with Cedar Lake Bridge, the other was with the old Highway sixty-seven bridge, but it didn't mention the third grant application. I, I can't recall what that...
The third grant was, uh, the repair, and this was our number one priority, repair of the old, our current Popsbury Bridge, and we asked for fifteen million dollars. We, we incremented in five increments, so that if we didn't get the full fifteen, we could get less than that.
Gotcha.
That, that should, that's a no-match project, it's a no-match grant, and we're gonna probably hear very soon.
Okay, and, um, item CC, this is a replacement air conditioning unit for the Sanger Theater, but, but my question is, we have a capital projects...
It's not part of...
Budget, if I remember correctly, where we put?
Right, it's...
For a number of projects, it's just, it's holding account for lack of a better term? Is that correct? That's where this is...
This was not done as part of the, the Sanger renovation.
Right.
It's a standalone contract for, to replace the air conditioning in the green room.
Okay, got that.
But we didn't do it, we, we didn't book, do it, we did it outside of the project 'cause we didn't wanna pay overhead.
Okay, I got it. Uh, item DD, that's an emergency water drainage repair at Kenmore and Brinmar. What happened there? I, I saw where it'd been dug up, I meant to ask you earlier.
It was a water main that busted.
Okay.
I don't think that it might have been by, by...
Yeah, you, you wish.
I can't, I can't.
Really?
Yeah.
You're serious? Okay, so is this, uh, so this was...
We had to try to sit back and see where the feed was from.
Yeah.
And it would be lights when it was...
Okay, uh, all right, so, um...
Councilman, one of this, if you'd allow me, I'd like to expand on the, that, that contract. We, we have thirty-six jobs that, uh, we've put to the contractor. Of those twenty-four, we've gotten estimates adding up to eight hundred, over almost nine hundred thousand dollars. And in the last two weeks, we've issued twelve POs for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were allowed to do that because the mayor let us move money from personnel into other contractual services in order to free up some more funds for these projects. We've got a ways to go though, as you heard me say, twelve projects, two fifty, twenty-four projects, eight hundred thousand. We don't have eight hundred thousand right now in that budget, we're gonna have to move some more money probably. And all, all towed over a million dollars in those thirty-six jobs. That's, that's, it's all being done with the IDIQ, uh, our repair replace contract.
Right, well, I mean, we've, we've saved a chunk of money by having unfilled vacancies in person, in, on personnel, basically, and that, that frees up some money to do this, and I applaud the effort to use some of those dollars in order to take care of some of these issues, beautification issues, really, and, and I, I appreciate that. Um, but, Mr. Allen, just to be sure, you're serious about that oak tree and that water line? Brinmar?
Yes, it's very possible that, uh, one line broke.
Knocked the lights out.
It's a lot. It broke that...
Okay, and, and how, how old is that, how old's the water lines out there in that area, do you reckon?
Old.
Old?
I'm sixty-eight, and I know I went to Edgewater Hotel for comedy.
Yeah, that's, that's fifty years, ooh, that'd be a good spot for a West Biloxi Master Plan Project. All right, let's see, the last item is, uh, one of the items we, we added, um, the addendum to the Alexander Van Leeuwen Accounting Audit Agreement. Yeah, what, what can you tell me about that? I understand, apparently there's some difficulty, so we, we've got this addendum.
There's, uh, this is AVL, our auditors, and, and with Diana examining, and they've been trying to clear up some things that were not, were balance sheet items regarding to, uh, construction improvement projects that were balance sheet items that they couldn't reconcile. It was shown on some rates, this is back, uh, maybe as far as Bobby Colibers, when, Coliber, when he had the, two thousand and sixteen, so...
Several years ago.
Yeah, and it's been noted but not reconciled, and I think this is an, an additional, uh, number of hours to reconcile that, using, you know, AVL to, uh, dig back and, and figure out what happened. There've been, been efforts with, uh, PWNL and unsuccessful to, to really get to reconciliation, but with it, I think Diana, you know, were very comfortable with AVL spending those hours in order to, to, you know, uh, fill that stuff.
I seen the estimates, about forty hours, give or take, they figured iron all was in, okay. Thank you, that concludes my comments.
All right, Mr. Guines?
I think there's one left for me. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, comment on I, uh, that's the Main Street eighty-twenty match, and, um, it's about time, I mean, glad that is here. Uh, did you have a projected date of start on it?
Councilman, we, uh, we're going through the bid tabs right now, there were two bids, and when, you know, the first thing we do after we open the bids is we go back and look at all their pricing to be sure they haven't missed anything. We should have that complete, uh, tomorrow, and at that point, we'll then do the resolution awarding the contract, and that'll come to you at your next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. That concludes my comments.
All right, Mr. Guines?
I'm just glad to see Hiller Park on the list, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Mr. Danny?
I noticed on here that there's a, a payment to, um, a plumbing company for, for the Sanger Theater. Can you just give me some insight on, on one, on what's going on with that project and, and to this item agenda?
This had, this, um, had nothing to do with the interior or exterior renovations to the Sanger Theater. It was just the existing air conditioner system, um, just a, a normal split system that was cooling just the, what they call the green room, which is the little one-story section outside, and it, it, it malfunctioned. So, we didn't wanna put it in the historical recovery project, we just wanted to, we did a, just a straight contract with a, with Patterson Plumbing, just to fix that, so it's not part of the Sanger Theater renovation, it's just a separate, um, standalone project.
Okay, thank you.
That was the best way to do it, otherwise, if we had to do it through the contract, we paid the contractor and the A and E and everybody else overhead.
All right, last but not least, Mr. Lawrence?
I got the wrong one.
Yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, they go together. They go together, I, I see.
On K, on the keister gate, uh, what are we doing?
Yeah, the key item there is the word reallocation.
Right.
There was money left in the design which could be used to, to compensate the company for inspection and project management, so we just moved the unused, um, money in their contract between the, so that we could pay, pay for more months of inspection. Obviously, the project's dragging on further than we hoped, so their costs and inspection are greater, but there was still money left in the design phase, so we just moving money from identical amount from X to Y.
No impact at all.
No impact on the overall contract.
The keister gate itself opened up, and they dug another big hole in Benaki, what's going on with Benaki, right down the vision?
Well, we're in the, the throes of the hardest part of the project now, trying to get, uh, all the final underground stuff cleared up, down on the east end of the section, and to get the paving done, which we talked about our challenges on paving, but, and, and then we've still got streetlights that have to be acquired, they're, they're ordered, and come in, and then Lainie Electric will, will do the streetlights. We're still two or three months away from that project being ready.
Let me, let me add too, that I think MDOT is gonna allow the contractor only two weeks to shut that, uh, that off ramp down, and when, when they actually allow that to happen, then the action's gonna be extremely fast, so they're getting it right up to that two-week level, uh, and when MDOT's gonna allow them, you know, instead of opening it and, and closing it, it'll be only two weeks, so when those two-week shutdown comes along, very close to, uh, the final throes of that, uh, project.
Yeah, I know, the K U, I didn't think... Yeah, I know, K U allowed anything right now because they also using the streets to get to the bay, because you can't go down Division Street, you know, I was with something out there, I couldn't understand, why they had two more streetlights on Division? They only, they used to have one at Hopkins and one at Bone, now they got one at.
Well, I think that was some of the engineering recommendations, it's one at Porter Avenue, one at Bone, what?
Benaki.
Yeah, Benaki.
Man, you got a full stoplight to get to Bone Street, how's that going to move traffic?
Well, it gets fast, I mean, you could all stop, and stop and stop and stop.
Figuring out what's the purpose of having them, I mean, no make much sense.
That's the way big cities do it, they synchronize those things.
And on M, with Oak Street Boat Ramp, is that the boat ramp on the, on the beach? On M?
This is on the beach, south.
One of the projects we, we, one of the three Tylenol's projects was the Oak Street Wraparound Pier, there is today so few opportunities for people to boat and come ashore and dine, and there are none in Biloxi right now, and so this is a, if you will, L-shaped wraparound, an extension of the pier, so it wraps around the great, great lawn.
Yeah.
And allow, allow boats to come in and dock and go, go ashore and have dine, dine or gamble or whatever.
Application for Tylenol.
I mean, so that's, that's just a Tylenol's application, it's a million-dollar project, whether or not we get it in another story.
So it's not, it's not a boat ramp, it's strictly all in the water.
Since I just, just.
Down the ramp.
Just a docking facility.
No dock, no.
It's strictly something outside on the water, so people can pull up, it's all totally different, okay?
Right.
And all this stuff y'all got on Keegan's Bayou, I hope we get to plenty, because you get, you got a couple of different places down there with the Keegan's Bayou, dredging out the bay, dredging out this here, I mean, I don't know how far and how much money you need to actually dredge out Keegan's Bayou, because it needed to be dropped about four or five feet to drain all that water off Division and Keister, so I mean, we're going to ever get to the back part of what I took you to, show you what it looked like back there, because the pipes are sitting in the water, that's why they don't, don't drain, we have to dredge out Keegan's Bayou.
Initially, I think when we started pitching this about four years ago, it's about nine million dollars to do everything, you know, we talked about, I think we got very good shot at about, you know, one-third of that in what future years to come, so I think coupled Keister, you know, and there's been requesting, you know, some mitigation, some help about flooding, but all, most Keister comes down, you know, at least half of it comes through that, that whole channel, and we need, you know, some, some help there to get it flowing right.
Yeah.
We're going to get about three, I think we're applying for about three million of that, of the possible nine.
Yeah, Keegan's Bayou itself back in the old days, in the fifties, was huge, you know, when they took, at that time, Notre Dame, they bought them seventeen acres, that they got rid of Bayou, that's why it shrunk down to nothing.
Yeah, that Bayou hasn't been dredged since before Katrina, so Lord only knows what's in it.
Yeah, if you put five foot of whatever underneath it, it's going to be amazing, they haven't taken a lot of files underneath that, five foot of soot, that's the biggest problem in draining it out, that's going to be tough. You find all the old cars have been missing for a long time. On the, you on the general obligation behind, you moving the money, how much money are we moving there, and the purpose of that?
Which one, which one, Councilman?
Ooh.
Yours and uniform?
Yeah, Utah, is that what it was? No, uniform, okay, uniform this week.
Okay, that resolution, I want to read it, resolution to amend the municipal budget for the fiscal year to recognize and receive the proceeds of the bond. So all we're doing is recognizing that the bond has been, the money is available, and putting it into the budget, that's all we're doing.
Recognizing the.
The money itself, okay, she hadn't really done it.
We're just, this is just part of the audit round.
No set that bond proceeds accounting entry.
That's it?
Okay, are there any exceptions?
No, wait, no.
Lawrence, any exception, Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman?
None.
Demme?
None.
Mr. Tisdale?
None.
Mr. Barrett?
No exceptions.
And I have none, all in favor, those opposed, motion carries unanimous. Move on to the routine agenda. Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second, moved by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Guines?
None.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing. I'm going to go to Mr. Lawrence.
Bring us some money up here, you've been on vacation the last two weeks, put money. The only got money we got a coat and towel, and so we got to figure, we getting nickels.
Well, you can see him smiling, so it's good news.
All right, who want to hear?
Last time, when I came before council, I informed you all that we were anticipating the two-point-five-one million, we did, in fact, receive the two-point-five-one million from MEMA on Friday, June twenty-fourth, and discussions with MEMA, we expect the next, the next amount of money's coming to the city as an additional one-point-six-three million at least.
I knew we had to be doing well.
Yeah, and again, let me remind you, we're burning at about a million a month, so we're in, we're in step, that's what we're paying our contractors.
That's correct, we're going to have a little bit of a bigger payout in July for this next pay-up, our contractor that's about to start the next project has a pretty substantial pay application for materials, about one-point-two, one-point-five million, but we have sufficient sixty-day funds to cover those costs.
Question since you're up there, on East End of Town, how fast are we going to talk land some blacktop?
Sir?
A lot of money down there we're wasting, because we got, the street's screwed up, nobody can get anywhere, so y'all ahead of schedule or behind schedule?
Well, everything was going well until this last little wrinkle with the paving company and the request for additional funds to pay for cost adjustments for bituminous material, asphalt, and diesel, we are, in fact, I have a conference call scheduled with the head of MEMA tomorrow and their local staff to discuss the city's proposal to move forward to address that.
I'm happy to, I mean, we all let it straightened out as possible.
Yes, sir.
If we can get back and forth to all these places.
If MEMA agrees, if MEMA agrees with our approach tomorrow, then we will go forward with a change order before council, and I'll probably issue a work change directive, telling them proceed that we're not delayed.
Yeah, because we lose our taxpayers down there, we don't have to fire you, I guess.
Yeah, sir, I, I hear quite a bit from the, from the people down there, so yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anyone else have anything they want to add? Anyone else call for the question, all in favor of the routine agenda, those opposed, motion carries, move on to eight A, study agenda.
Resolution requesting the planning commission to study the short-term rental ordinance for revision to create a short-term rental overlay district.
Have a motion? Mr. Tisdale, do I have a second?
What are we trying to do here, set up certain areas? Are we going to be different?
I need a second for discussion, a second for discussion.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Barrett, now we can discuss it, starting with Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I believe, Mr. Grillo, I think, I think, because we, we've been dealing with short-term rentals now for probably four years, maybe five years, and I think we had visited this before, and I thought it might be a good idea to come back and review that, or maybe the planning commission has additional, so it may be something you can pull off the shelf, I just thought it'd be a good idea to revisit this again, there've been a lot of contentious issues lately dealing with short-term rentals, might be good to take another look.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question, I know we, we talked about this, and especially when we had that last big group, wasn't you guys already charged with doing this? Didn't we charge you from the council to get us a report back, and if we did, I believe we did, where are we at on that?
The council didn't vote on it.
Okay, they didn't vote on it.
And that's what, that's what it would take for us to actually take the action to, to go back and do it, but that suggestion was made, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, okay.
I believe that suggestion was made by Councilman Guines.
Oh, yeah, that was, okay, okay, I have no problem, all right.
One of the things I would suggest on the, on the study agenda, though, you know, I know that we've talked about looking at all the water bodies in the city, you know, because that's where short-term rental seems to be the most popular, but if we, if we, when we start this, what I would recommend is that we break this down into phases, you know, we're going to have to advertise the properties that are under consideration, and just to keep those advertisements at a controllable level, and to, and to keep everybody in the city from coming in from, you know, the Gulf all the way to the rivers and Wool Market, we could start with Highway ninety, if that's agreeable with the council.
Yes.
We'll start with that and then move north as we go.
Right, because a gentleman that, that come and asked, asked about the short-term rental, where he was approved on the planning commission but not approved on the council, and I think the, the conversation came from a couple of months ago, where if we have a precise layout, then people wouldn't have to guess what they're going to do or not do, and that was the reason why it came up.
Well, the areas, the areas that are already zoned for short-term rental, you know, a lot of the areas along Highway ninety are already zoned to allow it as a use by right, so we wouldn't have to worry about advertising those areas, it would only be an advertisement for the areas that are either zoned to allow it as conditional use, or maybe some of the single-family areas that are actually within one or two blocks of the beach, and that would be, you know, the way that we would present it to the planning commission and then bring it back. Short-term rental is, is one of those things that comes along every once in a while that's such a divisive issue, because either, people either love it or they hate it, and there's not a lot of middle ground on it, but we'll, we'll put together the recommendations and the discussion for the planning commission and, and bring back their recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Said it, Mr. Allen?
I have a couple of things, like we passed that one last week, there, it's on Pass Road, right by Pass Road, and five bungalows, that's never been on the table, that was never the purpose of short-term rentals, short-term rentals started on Highway ninety, exactly supposed to be helping the shortage of the hotel room, but the only reason it ever been on the table, short-term rentals, it was for you to buy a house, and then we got turn, short-term rentals so you can pay for it, like half of them do, not you just.
Right, I understand, yeah.
You're like, I got one house, that's enough.
Yeah, I understand.
But I'm just saying, that's the purpose, and I would turn into all the real estate people, I was telling the houses, you can turn on a short-term rental, you turn on a short-term rental, and that's the problem, not that the purpose of this stuff, and we got four hundred right now, and you couldn't tell that we're doing any good with them or not, that's all the family, figure out what's happening, is it very, doing any good for the city? I would say no, I would say the same thing that happened in nineteen seventy-two, where they destroyed downtown Biloxi, thirty years from now, we're going to try to get rid of short-term rentals, because it can't benefit your town, and fifty years ago, we destroyed downtown Biloxi, I would pay many of the people, many of the dollars to go move downtown, we run them all out of downtown, run out of hundred minutes in downtown, so I mean, you got to watch what you do, this stuff is not perfect, and people dealing with this stuff, they buy houses, they make money, they don't care about City, Biloxi, they don't care about anything, they buy these houses to turn in short-term rental, think they're going to make a bunch of money, and we can't prove whether it helps us or don't help us, most of the time, we had to meet with the tax people, they can't even tell you, because they haven't collected money for short-term rental. Another thing I tell you, maybe, a lot of people in these bigger town with the air, B and B, when you go to those places like that, they seem to control those businesses better than most people, just trying to do it themselves, so if somebody thinks they're going to do it, you need to look at heaven, control other than the city, because you can't do it, you know, we have thirty more people take down all this stuff, you have no clue of that, or what they're doing, and now the weekend it changes, so how are you going to keep up if you can? That's why I've never been a big manufacturer, me, for short-term rentals, I see where it does no good for City, Biloxi, you know, when you leave residence homes, when you turn in a short-term rental, you're losing residents, you need residents, even if you're on the, you get over fifty thousand, the more money you're taking in taxes, so the more you lose, that's four hundred, a good loss, whatever it is right now, that's four hundred residents that don't live anymore, so anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, thank you, anyone else have anything they want to add to the study agenda, the only thing I want to say is, I would hope, this is, we're asking you, we're charging you with the study agenda, bring some information to the back and recommendations, I, I hope it's kept a little more narrow in scope, you know, for, for this purpose and not a wide blanket. Okay. Call for the question, all in favor of the study agenda, those opposed, motion carries unanimous, oh, wait, six one, Demme voted against, we'll move on to recess, and as I mentioned earlier, if y'all would allow me, I would like to make a motion to recess in memory of Gregory Paul Raddich.
I'll second it.
Everybody seconds it?
We all do.
All in favor, those opposed, motion carries, we stand in recess.
Seven twenty-eight, Kenny, good job.
I don't know, it took a little longer, hour and a half, that's a little.
So you said it's a D D?
It's on the seventh, what is seven, what is seven?
Seventh is Thursday.
Yep, it's Thursday, it is in public safety.
Nice to see you, I understand.